I will call our work session to order. It is a joint work session between the Richfield City Council, the HRA, and the Planning Commission. And we have one item, which is the proposal by Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative to develop up to 40 units of supportive housing on the Portland Avenue Roundabout Remnant Parcel, which is located at 66, 13, 20, and 20 through 25 on Portland Avenue. And I will pass it directly to Community Development Director Melissa Peelman.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Council, HRA and Planning Commission. Tonight, we're going to hear an initial proposal for the development of those vacant remnant parcels. For anyone who wasn't around or doesn't remember, those parcels were initially purchased in 2006 and 2007 by the Public Works Department as part of the construction project for the roundabout at 66th and Portland. Right-of-way was needed, and so those properties were acquired for that. It was formerly for single-family properties, there are four single-family, yep, houses. They're small lots. And since we acquired those properties, Julie and I did a quick count, and there have been at least six different developers who have looked at this property and tried to make a go of it. It's a challenging site. There are issues with access, depth, the location of the transit station, a number of things. But we're excited to hear a new proposal tonight from Beacon Interfaith. So I'm going to pass it to Assistant Director Urban to introduce the new proposal and then summarize the type of feedback that we're looking for from the group tonight. Thanks, Assistant Director.
Thank you, Melissa. Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, members of the HRA Council and Planning Commission. Beacon Interfaith Housing Collaborative has expressed an interest in developing a 30 to 40-unit apartment building on this property that's owned by the Housing and Redevelopment Authority at 66th and Portland, also known as the Portland Roundabout Remnant Parcel. Beacon develops supportive housing at deeply affordable levels throughout the Twin Cities. All units in this proposed development would be efficiencies, and 25 parking stalls would be provided under the three-story building. The population to be served would include neurodiverse youth and young adults, and supportive housing services would be provided on-site. The units would primarily be affordable at 30% of the area median income. Beacon would seek low-income housing tax credit funds, along with funds offered by Hennepin County and others to finance the project. They would also be asking the HRA for a reduced land price and potentially additional financial contributions. In just a minute, I'm going to introduce Kirsten Spreck, the Housing Director of Beacon, who is here to tell you a little bit more about Beacon and its mission, and then to present the concept in greater detail. But I just want to point out that there are several items that we want you to think about tonight and offer some feedback. The first is that the density being proposed would be consistent with high-density residential. However, the site is guided for medium-density residential in our comprehensive plan. And I would point out, I apologize, there is a mistake in the policy section of your staff report. I suggested it was still zoned R, single-family, but it was, in fact, rezoned to MR2 last spring. The second thing to think about is that the proposed development contains all efficiency units, and the city zoning ordinance limits the number of efficiencies within a building to 20%. The third thing to think about is the proposed parking ratio is below that of the city's requirements. There are certain exceptions to our parking ratio, but likely a 1.25 per unit parking ratio would be applied to 30 to 40-unit building here on this site. And they are proposing between .6 and .8 stalls per unit. And then finally, would HRA members consider a reduced land price and potentially additional financial assistance for the project? So as you know, at work sessions, we don't ask you for any kinds of decisions, but more direction. In this case, because there are some deviations from normal policy, it's just especially helpful if you can let us know if there are some areas that you're just not comfortable with us exploring further, or if you give some indication that, yes, you'd like more information, would be willing to let us explore things further. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kirsten, and she has a PowerPoint to share, and we'll let her take it away.
All right. Thanks, Julie. I'm going to bring the PowerPoint up here and get it into presentation mode so everybody can see it. Are folks able to see my screen? I'm getting it into presentation mode here. All right. So, thank you, Mayor, City Council members, Planning Commissioners, and HRA team. We appreciate you making time to hear our ideas of a potential development opportunity in Richfield. So as Julie mentioned, Beacon is a collaborative of congregations united in action. We create homes and advance equitable housing throughout the Twin Cities. We develop award-winning properties with a focus on deeply affordable. And most recently, in the last five years, permanent supportive housing with services right on-site. Our strengths in bringing a development to your community include technical expertise, a track record of being successful in securing resources. We are the most consistent recipient of funds as our deeply affordable model aligns closely with public funders. We also use a collaborative model that inspires public support. We draw on people from our congregations that live in your community to come out and provide that voice in favor and in support of work when we're talking with neighbors. And we also seek out lived experience and engage in finalizing and bringing our designs to life. And we have trusted partnerships with service providers and property managers. So as we talk about the site in Richfield, I thought it would be helpful to just talk about a couple of very similar developments that Beacon has in operation that you might be familiar with. 66 West is in Edina. This is a development that was completed in 2017. It's 39 furnished apartments, efficiencies, located directly across the street from Southdale. So great, great access, whoops, great access to transit, jobs, education. Our service provider on-site is Simpson Housing. And I thought I'd mention here, 66 West has 13 parking spaces. This is a population that, youth and young adults, that relies on transit, bicycles, and we don't see a lot of our residents owning vehicles. The second that's a similar development is in St. Paul. If you're familiar with where the Habitat for Humanity Twin Cities building is, we're right across the street. Prior Crossing was completed in 2016. It's 44 furnished efficiency units, again, for youth and young adults emerging from homelessness. It's right on the light rail, so great transit with great access to jobs and education. And our service partner at that site is the YMCA. At Prior Crossing, we have 12 parking spaces. And again, on a daily basis, none of them are typically fully in use. So as we think about the development in Richfield, this site, we were super excited when we met with Julie and the team, and this site was suggested to us. At first, we thought, wow, this seems kind of small, but as we started mapping it out and space planning on the site, we started to get more and more excited. But how our developments start is we really work with service providers and partners we have out in the community in identifying what is the population that is in great need, that's being underserved. And this neurodiverse youth and young adults is a population that really has risen to the top of the list. Now, when we think of neurodiverse, which is a fairly new term, it consists of conditions such as autism spectrum disorders, brain injury, and fetal alcohol syndrome. We have been talking with many of the service providers in the West Metro and talking about potential partnerships with Frazier, ARC, Hennepin County, and YMCA. They all continue to confirm and validate that this housing is needed. Hennepin County, we're in great alignment with Hennepin County priorities. This population is a priority population this year, and we expect that the RFP for supportive housing is going to drop this week. We're also in great alignment with the need for more multifamily rental at 30% AMI below for those experiencing homelessness and needing equitable access to housing. When you think about how our projects come together at Beacon, sometimes it feels like it takes a village, but we seek out resources from many parties. And in this situation, we would start with the city of Richfield. And that may come in the way of reduced land cost or other potential fees that could be waived and other supportive opportunities. Hennepin County has a number of resources that would be accessible to us for this development, as does the Met Council. And much of the funding is driven by Minnesota Housing and Finance Agency. And we have been awarded 9%, 4% low-income housing tax credits. And most recently, we've had a number of projects that have been funded with 100% housing infrastructure bonds. So we expect the total development cost of this potential development to be at about $17 million. And as you think about most of the units being 30% area median income, those will show up in a number of ways. High priority homeless, which is where we'll probably seek housing support, and you can see the rent level there. We always maximize persons with disabilities units in our buildings, and you can see the rents and resources that come with that. And then project-based vouchers is another conversation we would love to have with Richfield, especially in light of the Met Council's recent decision to focus only in their priority areas, which does not include Richfield. And then we would expect that there might be some units at the 50% AMI level, and you can see what the rent level would be there. So here's the site. We're very excited about this site. What we envision is a development that really takes advantage of the neighborhood. There is great transit at this location. We love the proximity to Veterans Park and the amenities, basically in either direction down 66 to get to Target and grocery and all sorts of other resources. We're proposing a three-story at 35 feet, which was within the allowable. We are suggesting 40 furnished efficiency apartments, much like what I shared at Prior Crossing and 66 West. We are proposing in this development 25 below-grade parking stalls plus lots of bicycle storage for the population we're expecting that will live here. And then we'll have ample space for program, services, and community. It will also provide for outdoor amenities spaces for the residents. So this illustration just shows kind of a quick illustration of how the building could be designed. You can see the first rectangle is the parking level, and that shows how the 25 parking stalls fit there. The first would contain most of the programming space and some units. And then Level 2 and 3 would be mostly, if not all, units. But we do want to take advantage of this site because there's a beautiful, clear line of site to downtown Minneapolis overlooking Veterans Park, and we would want to create some elevated outdoor space for the residents. So the timing of things, I thought it would be worth commenting on this. We're here and talking to you today, but time is of the essence. Hennepin County, again, I mentioned the RFP for supportive housing is going to be due in April. They will have a transit-oriented development of which this will be a great candidate. And of course, all the American Rescue Plan resources. Metropolitan Council would be dropping a number of RFPs in the spring, and then, of course, Minnesota Housing in July. But the effort does start with the city of Richfield. And so I'll stop there, and I can back up if needed and answer questions.
Thank you so much for that presentation. I'm just scrolling through here. Any questions from folks? And I see Councilmember Trauman.
Good evening. I wanted to thank you for the presentation, and I'm really gratified to know about your work and glad you're working in Richfield. You had mentioned, you know, working with local faith communities here in the cities that you come in. I was curious which communities you had been working with in Richfield. And then I was also wondering, you talked about a lot of great organizations like Frazier, and I was wondering if you were familiar with the Minnesota Independence College and Community as an organization that sounds like potentially a really good partner.
Yes, actually, Julie made the connection with MICC, and we actually have a meeting scheduled a few weeks from now to talk about the programs that they offer and understand that they are also pursuing potentially some housing to serve a similar population. I think when I look at the MICC, and I would compare and contrast the populations we aim to serve, MICC is really well situated to support and serve young adults with neurodiversity that have a great family support, financial supportive environment that they live in. When I looked at the tuition for MICC, I found it quite comparable to St. Olive's tuition, which I thankfully stopped paying for when my daughter graduated a few years ago. I would contrast that Beacon and the population that we aim to serve really are those similar young adults with neurodiversity, but those that don't have the financial means and don't have the family support, and those individuals that are at risk, if not already, experiencing homelessness. So we're looking forward to that conversation. And then I have one of our congregational organizers, Ricky Camille, is on the line. And I don't know, Ricky, if you wanted to talk about, we do have one church in Richfield that is part of our collaborative.
Yes, we do. We do have a church, Lutheran Church Woodlake, that is part of our collaborative. But in addition to this congregation, we are working with lots of congregations in the surrounding area who have membership in Richfield and really developing a lot of passion around this project, as it's something that a lot of people have a deep connection with and wanting to see more deeply affordable housing for the neurodivergent community.
That's great. Welcome.
Thank you.
I wanted to scroll through. Any other questions from folks? I see Councilmember Wayland.
Thank you, Mayor. Since we have three different groups here, I'll just give all my comments now to make sure others can speak. I will say personally, I think for all the reasons given, I'm not worried about the parking ratio, given who this serves. I'm generally very supportive of the project. I think that this kind of density is more than appropriate in terms of the, just because of the style of units that the folks are looking for in this kind of development, the building would actually be smaller than many of the recent developments we've seen. And so my one question is about all of the units being efficiencies. First, as much work as I've done in housing, I don't actually know, is that different than a studio? And either way, could you just talk through like what the floor plan of an efficiency would look like and speak a bit to are folks in this population looking for something larger? Are they all efficiencies largely to keep the costs down? If you could just share a bit of the thought process behind that.
Sure, I'm just going to back us up so we can look at this. So the rectangles you see here identifying the efficiency units, these are really, and an efficiency and a studio are the same thing. But you might be thinking of a single-room occupancy, SRO, is another form of housing. But we actually do have a couple buildings that are SROs, and that's where there's an individual private bedroom, but then there's shared restroom and kitchen facilities. And an efficiency has everything you need, a private bathroom, a kitchen, living space and sleeping space, all in a compact. Because of the youth and young adult population that we're serving at 66 West and Prior Crossing, we have found that these units are kind of perfectly suited for young individuals that are struggling or coming out of homelessness or at risk of homelessness. They can make it their own as they're getting stabilized and finding employment or finishing education and getting the supportive services they need. So we have found that these work very well. I'm not sure if Paul Melblum, our architect from MSR, was able to join the call, but I would ask him to join in with the response as well.
I think we did see him. Go ahead, Paul.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, so thanks, Kirsten. Yeah, so one of the things that is pretty well understood now about the kind of the mental and emotional needs of people coming out of homelessness is if they've been homeless for quite a while, or if they've had trauma, which homelessness in and of itself is trauma, but I'm talking about kind of trauma on top of that. They often feel most comfortable in a place where they can see everything that they own. There will be a separate bathroom, but a lot of these folks feel most comfortable in a smaller contained space rather than in a multi-room apartment building, like with a multi-room apartment, like with a separate bedroom, kind of a separate eating area and kitchen from a living area. So to best suit the needs of the residents, several different agencies that we've worked with have said that the efficiency units work best. And they're roughly around 450 square feet, 425 to 450, so they're not tiny. So this isn't microhousing. They are actually reasonably sized efficiency dwelling units, meeting the standards of the Minnesota Housing Finance Agency.
Thank you.
Okay, if you can give me one second. I see a couple hands up, but I'm just going to be scrolling through. Okay, it looks like Councilmember Supple and then Commissioner Onasor. Did you also have your hand up? Okay, so after Councilmember Supple, Commissioner Onasor, and then Councilmember Wayland after Commissioner Onasor.
Thank you for bringing this proposal. I was able to tour the 66 West site with the legal and voters when we were working on youth homelessness. And I'm thinking this sounds like it's very similar to that as far as the efficiencies. And we talked to some of the people that were living there, and I was very impressed with that facility. So I would be comfortable, you know, with having more efficiencies and having the parking ratio that would be fine, because I think that was a really great program that I saw in the supports that they had at 66 West. My question has to do with the density thing, and I'm thinking I'm probably fine with this density, but we did have a question from a resident who was supporting having higher density. So can you tell me how you arrived at like these numbers and this density and why you think this works for the site?
There's a number of factors that go into this, and feasibility is one of them. So pulling the funders together and serving the number of residents, there is kind of a cost-benefit analysis that goes into sizing a property like this. And when you bring in services, you know, and a percentage of the residents, or most of the residents will use these services, that kind of drives the size. And what we have found is that 40 for permanent supportive housing, whether it is, you know, individuals like we're proposing here, or families, is really a sweet spot number. So you'll see our developments are typically around that 40 to 50. And I don't know, Paul, you've done a number of projects with us. If there's any other dimension you might add.
No, I'll just add that it's not only Beacon, but we've designed projects for Aon and PPL, Project for Pride in Living, and all three of them, I would say, try somewhere to be in multiples of 40, because that seems to be a good balance point for the cost-benefit return of having somebody sitting at a front desk for several hours a day. So I think a lot of it's related to staffing levels that can be supported by the model.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would be supportive of this concept if it's like what you have over at 66 West, because I think there's a great need for it in the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, or sorry, Commissioner Onasor?
Yes, thank you, and thank you for bringing this project here to Richfield. I like the deep affordability part about it and the density I'm feeling comfortable with, with the studio apartments. I have a question about zero threshold or accessible units, and how would they be placed? I see on the floor plan, if that X is even an elevator, or is it just steps?
This here, the little X is the elevator.
It is an elevator. Okay.
So it would be an elevator where we would likely have accessible units on every floor.
Yeah, if we could see a couple of them on each floor, I think that would, I don't know if the development, that works easier, or if that poses a problem.
No, it's not a problem for distributing them throughout the building. I know that in some, some scoring systems will actually award more points for having a higher level than the required by building code amount of accessible units. The building is required by building code to have an elevator service all of the floors, so the parking level, and then all three of the floors, all of the units. And actually, any space that a resident or a staff person can go is required to meet, they call it visitability, visitability standards, which means that somebody in a wheelchair or somebody who is mobility impaired can get into that space. And then there are, like, all of the doors and the stairwells are all required to meet the ADA width and dimensional requirements, so that somebody who is mobility impaired can use those spaces. And then on top of that, I may get the percentage wrong, but I think it's 2% of the units have to have, as a minimum, have to have hearing and visual compensation for people who have hearing and/or visual impairments.
And I think, like I mentioned, you know, Beacon's practice is to maximize the number of people, we call them PWD, people with disability units.
That's great to hear. Thank you for doing that. My concern is always with the zero threshold of the shower units.
Yeah.
A lot of time, visitability doesn't always mean accessible to full accessibility.
Yeah, there'll be, some of the units will be required to have those types of showers.
Good, that's something I'd like to see. Thanks for your time tonight.
Yeah, thanks for the questions and support.
Thank you, Commissioner Onasor. I'm Councilmember Hayford O'Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. Just to, I think, respond to the questions first from staffs, the questions are density, efficiency, and parking. And I guess I just want to be clear with my And I guess I just want to be clear with my answers to both the density and the parking. This, this would be true regardless of whether this project goes forward. I hope it does, because it, it seems like a really helpful project for the community. But regardless of whether it's this project or another project, I, I do think this land should be high density residential. The fact that we've had six failed developments here suggests that something's not right about the way we're regulating the site. And also to emphasize that the, the D-line, the bus rapid transit line is literally halfway under construction, right in front of the site, like literally abutting this site. Um, it would, I think it would almost be a shame if we got a proposal that was in the eight to thirty-four units, because we'd be squandering the opportunity of that great site. So I absolutely support it being high density residential. Um, in terms of parking as well, I, I think this is another great example of why our requiring parking on projects like this is just not helpful. And trying to grant a special exception for this thing, I think would be potentially unfair to others who also have good housing projects. So I support the parking flexibility that's requested. I would just suggest that we do so in terms of reducing or eliminating parking requirements altogether for equivalent projects. So say less than fifty units on a major transit line, something like that. Um, so that it's about being fair and about reducing costs, reducing housing costs and not simply an exception for one applicant. Although again, in this case, I think this is a particularly good case for why they're not gonna need all that much parking. Um, in terms of the efficiency thing, I feel like I just need to know more. It, it totally makes sense in terms of this case. I just don't know enough about the history of why we have that requirement. I can, I can sort of see general concerns, but I think I just want to know more there. And then just in terms of this project, it does really seem useful. I guess I'm also thinking and comparing this with the project that's proposed on seventy-seventh that has a lot of hesitations. And I think a lot of the criticisms of that project, that it's not too busy with the street, that it's in kind of an industrial area, that it's close to the freeway. None of those apply here. So I feel like this is kind of what we asked for. This is a more neighborhood setting. This is accessible to transit. Um, it's accessible to parks and it's near other residential. So I think it's a good thing and I hope to see it move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary. Councilmember Trauman.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I just wanted to, to give my, my quick thoughts, um, with regards to the parking, not a primary concern. Um, I did have some concerns about the, the density. Um, Councilmember Hayford O'Leary made some really great observations about, uh, how long that lot has been empty and about the feasibility of other, um, less dense options on that property. And so that's given me something to think about, but I just, I'd flag that as potentially a concern, not the presence of the deeply affordable housing, which I think is fantastic in that space. But I, I do have some questions, although, um, Councilmember O'Leary's comments, I think were, were really well taken. So I appreciate those. Um, I did have a, a little bit of a question with regards to, um, to the services and, um, provided for, for people that are, that are transitioning, especially out of homelessness. And you kind of alluded to that, that there are a lot of times, a lot of things going on, you know, that, that housing is not, is not the only or even primary, um, challenge. Um, and so, um, I was wondering if you could, um, share a little bit more about what the experience has been with your, the other, uh, maybe comparable development in Edina. Um, and then, uh, just invite the, um, the, the, the faith community liaison, uh, the Ricky, um, to Oak Grove Lutheran is a great church, but really don't miss the opportunity to connect with, um, lots of other communities. I think this is a great opportunity for masjets and other, other organizations to really come alongside and, uh, and, and be a community presence.
Thank you for that. Um, our service partnerships, uh, I actually have a counterpart. Um, I'm the Director of Housing Development. I have a partner here at Beacon, um, Kinda Stoll, who is our Director of Service Partnerships, and she was unable to be here tonight. But what we find is, um, each, each development takes on its own personality based on the, the folks we're aiming to serve and the community that we're in. Um, so each, each building, those services and the program is designed specifically to meet the needs and what we would expect. Um, and, and I would share, um, both at Prior Crossing and at sixty-six West. There is a percentage of the population in both of those buildings that are individuals with neurodiverse, um, challenges. So, um, figuring out, um, how we're dealing with it and, and managing and supporting in our other properties definitely informs and educates. And in this case, we're looking for that partner that can bring that expertise um, in neurodiversity to, to help us navigate and design what this, um, supportive program will be. But it is, it is the stabilizing and helping individual, young individuals through trauma. It's, um, supporting education, supporting job, um, creating that supportive network, um, to help folks stabilize, um, their situation in their lives.
No, that's great. I really appreciate that. I think that's something as we look at the, the program going forward, I'd be really interested in just understanding that really specifically, because I think that the, the, the success of the, of this, this opportunity in our community is gonna rise or fall on those, on, on those, those critical competencies and those, those supports. Um, so thank you for sharing that.
Yes. Thank you.
Um, I saw three hands up, so we'll go Commissioner Caneely and then we'll go Commissioner Rudolph. And then I saw Commissioner, um, Quam after that.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I would really like to see this move forward. I, I won't spend, uh, time repeating things that the city council members have already said in favor. Um, I agree with them. I have two questions. Uh, my first for Beacon is I, I want to make sure that I, I have this correct. The, the comparable thirty-nine unit facility, sixty-six West has thirteen spaces. Is that correct? So I, I'm curious if we truly need twenty-five here. I'd like to challenge that and just, I'm curious if there's a, a different or better use for the space than parking spaces that might not be necessary. And, uh, my second question for, for city staff is how changing the zoning for this lot to high density would affect the, the neighboring lots on the east side of Portland between sixty-sixth and sixty-seventh? I saw in the comprehensive plan, they're all guided for medium density right now. Now, I was just, yeah, curious if, if we're able to zone one high density without affecting the rest. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner Caneely, I'll just jump in quickly and answer that. Yes, if we were going to look at, uh, comprehensive plan change for this area, we would need to look at the area. We'd need to look if it would, um, make sense to re-guide other areas. I think that looking at the particulars of this site and the area around it, I think that, that it would be reasonable to transition from a commercial corridor along a transit corridor, um, to transition from commercial to high density to medium density. Um, but, but as a staff, we would need to look at that more, um, in depth as the project would move forward.
Commissioner Rudolph?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, my question is, I really like this project, um, but, um, are you curious on, uh, what, what kind of hurdles we would need to get through as far as? I'm not sure if there's gonna be any, uh, impervious coverage issues. I know this lot is fairly small, um, or any, any other zoning issues that would set us up for, uh, setting precedent for other things that, you know, maybe or may not get turned down in the future. I'm just being a devil's advocate here. Um, just throwing that out, um, for things that women need to think about in the future.
So, so we do think, um, we're kind of in, in line with the zoning on all the setbacks and the height. So we do expect that we'll have some pretty generous outdoor space to create some amenity space. Because this is a vulnerable population, we'll wanna, uh, kind of have fencing and, and create a secure and safe environment uh, for these folks who are sometimes very vulnerable. Um, but we are anticipating, um, that there will be some, some good green space. Um, plus the ability to do some elevated outdoor space, you know, facing the downtown skyline and looking over the park. Um, I don't know if that's getting to the, the question, but I think we are meeting all the required setbacks with what we're proposing.
All right. Absolutely. Thank you very much. Yes. It, it sounds like a really exciting project. I just wanted to make sure that we're not setting ourselves up for any issues down the road.
Thank you.
Commissioner Quam?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, couple of things. I had a quick question for staff, probably Julie Urban. Um, what is, or, or Melissa, what is the purpose of our, just briefly, why do we have a efficiency limitation in medium density?
Chair Quam, um, unless Julie wants to arm wrestle me for it, I can take that one. I believe that the reasoning behind that is that as Richfield was developing, we, um, first of all, the community was a little bit worried about apartments. Um, and so there was some desire to limit, um, units, the, the, the smaller units and encourage families, um, styles. Also, as Richfield developed, we only built one-room apartments. So if you look at a lot of our housing stock, it's one-room or studio apartments. And as the community grew, we were looking for some diversity in that. So I think that is the purpose. That's why it's been left in there is because we were looking for larger units and looking to limit. Um, in this case, obviously there's a, there's a different population that we're looking to serve. So maybe it's worth, um, an exception in this case. Are we looking at that section of the code?
Okay. Thank you. Um, and then, let's see. So Ms. Breck, do you have a picture of the building? Like, will it look like sixty-sixth West from the front or side? And then another question for you is that you said you're prioritizing people with disabilities. Is that the eighty percent you're shooting for? Um, as far as the population?
Um, we expect that, um, and, and we, we haven't figured out the actual breakdown of how many units will be for people with disabilities. Um, and we'll be working with service providers to determine, you know, what percentage of the population will be prioritized for neurodiverse. We expect there will be, um, some youth and young adults that maybe don't have neurodiversity, but maybe have some other challenges. Um, we don't have a picture of what the building looks like, um, yet. Right now, we're just doing the, does it fit on the site and can it come together? So what you're seeing are, are kind of those quick and dirty hit plans to, to make sure that it's possible. Um, I would tell you that in designing the building, that's a process that includes the community of Richfield and the city staff that, um, help weigh in on what the exterior building materials um, and, and work with us and our architects to, to figure out what's gonna be most attractive on this site for the community. Um, and we kind of created some really beautiful buildings all around the Twin Cities, um, going through that process.
Well, I'm glad you're meeting the setback requirements. That's kind of a thing that comes up a lot is these big block style buildings really close to the corridor. So, um, and, and I hope it does have a little bit of inflection in the layering and not just the block, but I know that you can't always choose that. Um, it sounds like a great project and because our parking is one-point-two-five per unit despite bedroom numbers. Um, when it's an efficiency, it makes sense anyway to, for that to be lower. And now especially with that population. So, sounds exciting. Uh huh.
Yeah, but we're, we're falling in love with the site for sure. Um, we really think it's a great fit for what we're proposing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Holmbein, um, Johnson?
Yes, thank you. Um, my concern, this is, seems like a really wonderful project and will serve the community and the population that it seeks to. My concern is like over the long term, I'm, I'm not as familiar with your organization, but over the long term, what, um, I mean, what will prevent, I've seen projects like this in other places and over time, the interest in maintaining or the organization that runs it kind of loses steam or it changes hands or funding changes and they fall into kind of disrepair. And what, what, what will make sure that this continues to be a beautiful, safe, um, and, and, um, clean place for people to live and that it doesn't kind of fall into a, you know, a place where we don't really want, where I wouldn't want my family to live.
But great questions. Thank you for that. Um, we are, um, we operate in a highly regulated environment. So not only are we seeking support from the city of Richfield, but every organization that provides funding. And if this is a, um, tax credit deal, we also have an equity investor on the scene and they hold us accountable to producing, um, the quality housing. Um, oftentimes we commit to keeping this housing affordable for forty years. Um, and every, you know, organizations like HUD and Minnesota Housing have, um, stringent, uh, requirements. Things like green buildings and, um, sustainability and elements that, um, might be a little more intense than somebody who's going out and getting financing from a bank. So we find that our, our buildings and our properties are, are built and they're very high quality. And that they are designed, not only the capital to, to build them and, um, get them ready to be occupied, but we're also raising and identifying the resources to operate them, to provide the services, um, for the long run. And, and I would welcome, if there's an opportunity down the road to actually, um, tour a couple of our facilities, um, like sixty-six West or Prior Crossing, um, might be super helpful. Both of those buildings have been in operation for a few years now and, um, look as great as they did, uh, when they opened. And, and when we do have a building that, um, uh, starts to age, uh, we have the opportunity to reinvest and we take advantage of those opportunities. We have a downtown Minneapolis property right now that Paul and MSR architects are, uh, helping us. We're expanding and renovating the existing portion of the building to keep it in great, great shape for the residents.
All right. Um, I think we have at least two more comments. So, and we're getting close to time. So if folks can just try to be brief and then I want to give it back to staff to do a quick summary and then I'd like to just give my comments as well. So Councilmember Whelan, I know you wanted to make a point. And then Councilmember, or, um, Commissioner Hanson, if you want to go after Councilmember Whelan.
I was just curious, uh, we only heard an answer to one of Commissioner Caneely's questions and I was curious about the, the parking. If twenty-five was just chosen to get as close to our numbers as possible, or if that's truly what the, um, Beacon believes is needed for this site?
Well, I will say that, um, in the last few years with all of our developments, we've been putting parking, um, below grade. Uh, we think it's, it creates, um, a safe and secure environment. And even, even if we don't have, uh, many cars down there, we will have tons of bicycle storage. Uh, so yeah, we'd be open to discussing what the need, we were attempting to maximize the parking to, um, show an effort and, um, make sure that we're, um, looking like an attractive development for you folks. So we'd be open to a discussion on that one. Thank you for calling that out.
Commissioner Hanson?
Councilmember Whelan kind of beat me to the punch. I was gonna kind of circle back to Commissioner Keely, uh, Caneely's question about the parking. Since this has twice as many stalls as like your Edina and, uh, St. Paul developments. And those developments don't seem to have, uh, full capacity use of them. So yeah, I was kind of wondering, could the space be used for something better? So maybe like recreational space for, uh, residents?
That's a great suggestion.
Any other question?
Take that back to the design team. Thank you.
Um, I was gonna share one point briefly and then I wanted to see if anyone else had a question. Um, Commissioner Rudolph, is your hand still up? Did you want to speak or is that just from before? Okay. Um, well, I am very excited about this project. I feel very supportive of it. And I really also appreciate, um, the questions that the council members and the commissioners are asking. Honestly, I don't know that I have other questions, but I really do appreciate the questions that they're asking and, and think that, um, kind of exploring the things that folks are bringing up is gonna help it be a better project. So from my perspective, that's where I'm at. Um, looks like council members, did any, okay, this helps. I can see more people now. Um, anybody who hasn't spoken, does anybody want to speak who hasn't spoken yet? Okay. And then it looks like Councilmember Supple, are you, do you want, have your hand up to talk again?
I just had one quick question that occurred to me.
I just had one quick question that occurred to me, um, after I spoke. I believe at sixty-six West, there's like a maximum age. Would, would these services be restricted to, like, up to a certain age, or is that not going to be the case?
Um, when we think of, uh, youth and young adults, it's typically between the ages of sixteen and twenty-four. So those are the individuals that would be prioritized. And, and the services would be set up to, to serve, um, that population. I would have to ask our service provider of, you know, the what, how we manage through that, because one thing is permanent supportive housing is exactly what it, it means. It's permanent housing, uh, so there is no time limit. Um, and if this is how an individual becomes stabilized, and this is the environment where they can be successful, there's, there's no time limit. There's nobody, someone pushing them out the door, so, um, we can circle back to answer that specifically for you. Thanks for that question.
Any other questions before I pass it back to staff? Okay, I'd just like to say thank you to our presenters. Thank you for presenting this great idea. Um, I have just wondered for years, what are we going to do with that piece of property? And there have been so many different ideas, but nothing has really come to fruition. Um, so I will pass it to Community Development Director Melissa Powell. Is there anything else you need, uh, clarification from us? Or kind of do you want to go over next steps?
I think I'm going to let Assistant Director Urban go over next steps. The only thing I will mention is, it did, uh, state in your staff report that we have had one other interested party in this, um, and that is the commercial property next door. Based on the discussion tonight, I am going to let that property owner know that the, um, policymakers are generally supportive, and we're going to look for, look into exploring this, uh, possibility, unless I hear something different from you. And then I'm going to pass it to Assistant Director Urban.
Thank you. Um, I really appreciate all the feedback. I think we, we got, I really appreciate that you, you covered all three points. I heard that you are actually, um, fine with the density, and I appreciate pointing out the smaller building because of the smaller-sized units, and, um, really gave us some great, um, feedback on that parking. I hear, you know, twenty-five maybe seems like too much, and I think that that was also good to know, and, um, if, um, the efficiencies, um, I think we all agree that, um, Beacon is a thoughtful provider of housing and to, trying to meet the needs of the people that they're, um, serving, and that that's something that you are also supportive. So I heard great support. We didn't get into the financial piece. I didn't hear any of that from the HRA, but I'm gonna, um, assume that, given your support of the project, and that you know that, um, funding affordable housing is challenging and needs our help, that, you know, we will, um, obviously work with our financial consultants to review, um, their numbers and, and, and see what the need is, and, um, uh, bring more of that to the HRA. And then I would just point out, as with MICC, if you remember last summer when they came before you, as they seek out funding from different funders, there is going to be a need for letters of support. And while we still need a lot more details about the project before we can say, yes, we've approved this particular project, we want to be able to provide them with some indication of support. And so I think, like we did with MICC, we will bring forward to the council and the HRA, uh, a resolution that just talks about supporting the mission of Beacon and our desire for deeply affordable housing and, uh, housing for people with disabilities. And, and so we'll put something together and bring that to you probably in the next, um, couple of weeks, so that we can help them meet their first, um, funding deadlines. A- as far as others, that's sort of the first step. Other steps is we'll start to look at the finances. Um, Beacon will have to make, um, you know, more specific development, and, um, I would guess we will not be coming forward with entitlements until after funding, but, um, Christian and I will have to discuss that sort of. This was just really important to get this feedback from you, um, and hear the support, so we can put more resources into developing things further. So thank you so much.
Great. Well, thank you for the great presentation. Thank you for the awesome questions and feedback, um, council and commissioners. And I will adjourn our meeting and see our council in a few minutes. Thank you, everyone.